I call the meeting of the Board of Educational Order and have the clerk lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome everybody, and to those of you viewing from afar, welcome to our meeting. If I could have a motion to approve the December 11th agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor? Thank you. We also have a consent agenda consisting of several resolutions that are before you. If I could have a motion in a second that the board approve the consent agenda as it so appears.
Second.
Any questions on that? All those in favor? Thank you. We also have a treasurer's report that you've seen in your packet and reviewed. And we do want to offer our congratulations to our treasurer who's in the audience. Bill, welcome back and congratulations. Hopefully you're getting sleep. If I could have a motion that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and the school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the months ending September 30th and October 31st, 2018 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any questions or comments on the treasurer's report? All those in favor? Thank you. We are now under special reports.
We have two special reports tonight. First, we have, I'll ask Marty Morrow to come up. She's going to run through for the board Medicaid compliance plan recertification. And then that'll be followed by our Penfield High School course description guide, which will be presented by Ms. Dana, our counseling department chair, as well as Chris Sloan, our interim principal, as Dr. Maloney is out on maternity leave. Marty, all you.
Thank you for inviting me to the meeting tonight. I just wanted to give you a refresher on the Medicaid billing process in Penfield and answer any questions you have on our compliance plan. SSHSP is a New York State program that gives us access to federal monies for medically necessary services for students with disabilities that are Medicaid eligible. Our compliance committee consists of Barb Gregory, Scott Dreschler, Bill Maloney, and myself. We meet quarterly to just make sure we're up to date with their compliance and processes. If you suspect waste or fraud, you may contact Barb Gregory or the Office of the Medicaid Inspector General. That information is provided. In Penfield, we submit claims for OT, PT, and speech as is listed on the IEP for students with disabilities. The other services that are listed are not services that we have billed for because the tracking mechanisms for the documentation isn't school district friendly. So, as opposed to changing our processes to meet their needs, we choose not to bill for those services. Parental consent is one of the criteria for submitting claims for Medicaid services. Oprah is a program that is used to, for individuals who order, prescribe, refer, or attend services that are Medicaid eligible. And so all of our speech pathologists had to enroll into this program five years ago when it was implemented, and again, they renewed this year because it's a five-year term. All of the therapists that provide services have to have a license in New York State and be certified. If they are not licensed, then they have to work under the direction of a service provider who is licensed. In district, all of our providers are licensed and certified. But out-of-district agencies do have providers that work under the direction of therapists who are, and then it's just more paper tracking for us. The NPI Registry is a national registry of service providers that lets us just look up a provider and make sure that they are qualified as they say they are. The exclusion list is a list of people who have been listed as, people who should not provide services to our children for fraud or other reasons. We're able to look those individuals up and make sure that new employees or new service providers are not a part of that list. And then they are not going to provide services to our students, and we would not be able to submit claims for their services. This is the list of issues that occur that when we bill for any services, if we come up against any of these, then we cannot be reimbursed for them. It gives us something to attempt to correct moving forward. Typically, we can't go back and make a correction to it because there's a time constraint tied to the service notes that providers enter. So it's a very short window of time that we have to make corrections to those. So we just, you know, try to update our records as quickly as possible with things like the student eligibility or parent consent. And I'll tell you more about that in a minute. Frontline is our service provider, they submit our claims. We have our individual IEP plans in that system. And so it's directly connected to the session notes that the providers enter. It's streamlined the process for us, and it's been a very effective change to our process. The last two bullets are about the obtaining of student eligibility, which is a system that New York State's been trying to tweak and hopefully will have a new process implemented by March. And the last bullet is a process, the big five cities in New York State are trying to get the Medicaid application process to include parental consent for billing so that every time a student moves from one district to another, the parents don't have to sign a new consent form for that district to submit claims for Medicaid purposes. So those are just some of the things that districts are working on to streamline their efforts. That's all I have for you. Any questions?
Board members, any questions?
Just a comment.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, we understand how complex it is, and we appreciate you trying your best to keep us informed and keep us compliant. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Marty.
You're welcome. Have a nice holiday, everyone.
So our next presentation, special report, is from Penfield High School and the course selection guide. And while they're getting ready, I just want to say thank you to Chris Sloan, who stepped in to be our interim principal. And for the board and the community, Chris Sloan had the pleasure of hiring me twice. Wants to be a teacher in Greece when she worked in HR, and wants to be an assistant principal when she was the principal of Olympia. So I'm really happy she was able to step in in relatively short notice and has been doing a great job supporting the high school. I also want to thank Steph Dana. When there's a leadership change, in this case, for a wonderful reason, Dr. Maloney's out, but it sometimes can create a bit of a power vacuum, and people have to step up to make things run. And Steph, as our department chair for counseling, has been incredible, really stepping in and taking the lead on lots of things. And so we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the warm welcome.
And I would hire you again twice.
Thank you.
So, good evening. We're here tonight to talk a little bit about course selection and understanding the course selection guide. This will be my 18th year looking at this kind of process. And so I hope to bring some value, although I will say that the counseling staff already has a great system in place. We have been able to talk a little bit about it and spend some time with it and have already started to brainstorm maybe a couple of other things that we could add to it to help not only facilitate teacher voice, but student and parent voice. One of the things, as you can see, these are the courses that we potentially will schedule. And then, obviously, it's all based on enrollment, as you probably all know. And depending on the enrollment, that's what courses will run next year. One of the things we talked about already is, I felt like you do such a great job with your support services, but they're not really listed or explained. So we've already started to take a look at the guide for next year, talking a little bit about, well, what if I need supports? Because you can see the advanced placement and all the wonderful programming you have, but you don't really understand the supports that are also there, which are also wonderful. And two, we talked about a little bit, where would I, as a parent, maybe of a special ed student, understand where I fit in? So we have brainstormed sort of a broad stroke kind of look at services for the future because I think that that needs to be incorporated. But obviously, you can't be specific because a lot of those decisions are made at either the team meetings or CSEs. But definitely something that we've already talked about with the counseling and administrative staff that might be missing. This is beautiful. I'm just thrilled always to see student artwork. So you can see that the cover and the guide has been updated. And I'm, understanding will be typically every year so that we're highlighting students and their performance and beautiful work around the building as well as on this guide.
And as you can see, you may recall from last year, we revamped our course selection guide and reformatted it to make it more user-friendly for our parents, students, and teachers. And we've heard some awesome feedback from parents just about how much easier it is to search in our course selection guide. It used to just be a big list and not searchable. But we have a wonderful counseling office secretary, Deb Stampon, who is very, very skilled, and she's actually a Webster parent. And she looks at the Webster Course Selection Guide and tells us things that ours is better at. She's more proud of the Penfield guide even being a Webster parent because she takes things, she looks at that parent perspective and adds it to ours. So we're very fortunate to have someone as skilled as her working on the guide for us. I have to say, I appreciate working with Chris Sloan and her years of experience and what she brings to us from other placements because 18 years of experience, sometimes we can kind of look at the same things again and again. And she's offered us some neat ideas. But one of, as always, we do like to highlight our AP classes and our dual credit. I was looking before coming in here today, and we're up to 31 classes at the high school that do offer dual enrollment. And with dual enrollment, a student takes a high school class but also has the potential to earn college credit, be it through MCC, Syracuse, or Syracuse University, through the Syracuse University Project Advance, or through the Rochester Institute of Technology. Many of our engineering project Lead the Way classes. So we're pretty proud of the fact that we have AP classes, about 17, I believe, but also we have the dual credit options. And we find that dual credit options are great for all students. Sometimes they're a little more attainable than the AP classes where students can earn that, get a jump start on college. And we're finding more and more students from Penfield do graduate in three or three and a half years from college, which is a significant savings to families. I would have to say, last year, we had a lot of course changes or new additions, but this year, we haven't changed much. We are very, very excited to kind of reformat a class. Currently this year, we're offering Insights to Physics. And the Science Department has been working very, very closely with MCC and optics businesses in our community. And they find that there's a true need to offer more optics opportunities to our students. So a few years ago, we introduced physics honors with optics at PHS. And again, that was a really targeted to a group of students that were accelerated and high achieving. And what we've found is, while those students do great in it and earn the optics credits through MCC, we're missing a real population here of students that are really applied, hands-on type students that could be great, could be employed in some different optics companies in our community. We're considered a Mecca for opportunity in the optics field here in Rochester. And working with MCC, what they said is, we're putting the most kids through optics, but they're not going into the workforce. And there's a spectrum of workers, from engineers in optics to kind of that entry-level position. And a lot of our companies do need entry-level workers. And for a student that wants a hands-on experience, we're going to have a half-year science class. And what we're working on right now is incorporating a field trips to local companies, one being Optimax in Ontario. And we've actually taken some students there already this year who will be starting an internship program this January with the goal of being employed in July. And they offer crazy incentives for students to get their two-year degree in optical technology from MCC. So we really, really hope that this class kind of excites kids and provides new opportunity for students. So it's not so much a new course, it's kind of revamping our Insights to Physics class to really focus on Insights to Optics. And it will also carry dual credit through MCC. Microsoft Office, we introduced this as a new class to the board last year. Unfortunately, it did not run this year. And what we heard from student feedback was that we offered it as a full-year elective. And Penfield offers a lot, and unfortunately, kids couldn't fit it into their schedules because there were so many different choices the kids wanted. And we were able to look at the curriculum with the business department and offer it as a half-year course so kids could get introduced to the Microsoft Office class. This will also be part of our CTE certification through New York State that we're applying for this year for our business program. We will have a half-year class, and it will be a partnership class with MCC, so another dual enrollment class. And finally, Principles of Land, Air, and Sea Vehicles. A couple of years back, we used to always run this class, and it's been renamed and remarketed. It's formerly known as Transportation Systems. So this is a class about systems. It's a systems class within our technology program. And again, this really targets a different, not, kids that are hands-on here, kids that want to learn to, about different transportation systems. And our tech department truly feels that we offer a lot of engineering classes, but they would like to do more applied classes in addition to wood shop, working with woods types classes. So they're excited to offer this class under a new name. And we did remove one of the technology electives to make room for this one, just to give kids choice every other year. We've gone to some rotating courses just to offer more and make sure enrollment hits what it needs to. And any class that we introduced, we did take something out this year, but we'll bring it back next year on a rotation. So those are kind of the big, the few changes that we have for next year. Finally, this is a process that Chris Sloan has really looked at us with and offered us some highlights. So you can see, this week, we've been doing teacher advisement at the high school where teachers talk to students and kind of give suggestions, ideas of what's next for them for next year. We, this process will take from now until February break, where the counselors will meet with every student in the building to kind of create their four-year plan and their course selections. Some of the highlights and the new changes that we will be doing is, our grade eight parent night, we are thrilled. We have reformatted that night. And kind of has to do with what you said, Chris. We will be offering, you know, a general program, but then breakout groups. So we will have a group that breaks out on student support services, so that continuum of support from gen ed supports all the way through special education supports. And so parents that really want to hear about that can attend that. There'll be a breakout for honors and AP courses. So sometimes I've felt bad running presentations where we talk a lot about honors and AP, but not enough about the supports. And, you know, different people need to hear different things, and we need to individualize and tailor to each student here. So we will be reformatting that night, which will be January 8th. And the other big change is, we will be offering a teacher review of student selections in March. We're going to have all of our departments review student selections. And students that they feel maybe need to jump up in rigor or maybe are kind of taking classes that might be not appropriate for them, we are going to have teachers actually calling parents because we really want to reduce the number of schedule changes. We want to keep class sizes balanced. We don't want to have big swings of students moving from different level classes. So these are some ideas Chris has brought to us, and we've been able to kind of come up with a plan for those. And I think it only makes our scheduling process better. So that's kind of what we're looking at. And I guess we'd open it up to any questions that you guys may have.
Well, thank you. And Chris, thanks for jumping in and adding value to, you know, this process. It's comprehensive as usual, and the cover is just outstanding. I mean, it really is, isn't it?
Beautiful.
Any questions, board members? Barb?
What time on the 8th is your parent meeting?
It's going to be at 6:30 till 8 o'clock, so.
Because we have a board meeting that night. It's going to be.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm just going to say parking is going to be an issue. That's all.
Maybe there's a basketball game too.
There probably will. And a concert.
We could plan an executive session to start at 5:00 to make sure we get in early, if you're worried about parking.
I'm ready.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up.
Well, you know, each one of us has unique talents. Well, I know I can walk. I'll, we can all walk from my house.
If I recall, calendaring and scrapbooking were your key talents.
Yes, right.
Anyone else, questions? This is quite, anyone? This is quite comprehensive, and again, we appreciate it. We know it's timely. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
I just want to say, when we look at the classes you're offering, the ones you highlighted, I think parents appreciate it. I don't know if students appreciate the kind of opportunities they're getting. And I mean, I look at these and I'm, I want to just talk to my kids about, you should be taking this and this and this. They're, you know, even, and, yeah, even if it's not something they're going to go into, it gives them breadth. It gives them exposure. And I think it's great that we're giving them these opportunities, whether it be optics or office or the, of course, air. But again.
I thought John might have a comment on the air class, but no, no comment?
Well, we'll do it for him. But again, I think, I think parents appreciate these and understand these, that hopefully, we can encourage the students to branch out into things that are a little bit different for their classes.
And we appreciate you guys supporting our endeavors, so thank you.
All right, well, thanks again.
Thank you.
Again, Chris, welcome.
Thank you very much. That concludes our special report for this evening.
All right.
Okay. Very good. Visitor speaking time, did we, anyone sign up? Okay, as everyone knows, here and at home, this is the time when anyone can come in and address the board. Tonight, we have no one in that category, so we'll move on to our student representative.
Past few weeks, as it's the holiday season and all the concerts and stuff, at Harris Hill, over 100 bags are going to be donated to Salvation Army for Operation Family Time. The first graders will be making and decorating gingerbread houses on December 14th. On December 18th, there will be a chorus band and orchestra winter concert. And as the holiday season comes up, there's going to be a Polar Express Day, which is a favorite, and where the kindergartners will hear the classics story. And on December 21st, Mrs. Irkvich's class will display and sell wonderful holiday-themed arts and crafts that they've made. At Harris Hill, the fourth graders learned how to solve long-division problems using different strategies. Jared Campbell, a musician, I think, put on a fantastic performance for the students, reminding them to make Cobles a positive place. At Indian Landing, they have a holiday helping hands where they will, their goal is to donate $1,000 to support Indian Landing families that need assistance during the holiday season. They have a winter concert starting right now at Indian Landing. And they have social emotional learning where they continue to use the monthly Partner Pride assemblies as a time to focus on their emotional well-being. And they're, all students in, from kindergarten to second grade are paired up with a buddy, class with a buddy from third to fifth grade. And they've been talking about zones of regulation and what their bodies feel like in each of these zones. And their goal is to be in the green zone and ready to learn. They want you to save the date for January 11th and 12th as their drama club continues to rehearse and are gearing up for their shows. At Scribner, winter concerts are being held tomorrow. If you have nothing to do, all these winter concerts. Fourth graders and teachers completed their annual community service where they made 135 complete sets of fleece mittens, hats, and scarves for School 33 downtown. At Bay Trail, they've already held all their winter concerts, and they have made various donations to Foundation House, Happy Birthday Cha Cha Cha, and Lollipop Farm. At Penfield High School, the winter fall, the winter sports seasons are beginning with girls' and boys' basketball and hockey. Winter concerts are also being held, and Patriot Supporting Patriots are making holiday cards that they are sending to veterans. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Very thorough as usual, thank you. Okay, Dr. Putnam.
Great. This evening, we just have, just have a couple of student and staff honors. And then I'll turn it over to the, I believe it's supposed to say, Budget Forecast and Reserves Plan to Dr. Sansucci. So one is the SEPTA Book Fair, and that was held la, two Saturdays ago, the first Saturday in December. And they had, if you remember our last board meeting, we had a representative from SEPTA to come and talk about the book fair. And there were many guest authors and readers from each building and musical entertainment, and the therapy dogs were there, and it was wonderful. Indian Landing won the most participants. You write your name on a piece of paper, and it goes into the bucket, and whichever school has the most people, they win a prize. And then new this year was, they did have a barista bowl. So students from Bay Trail, as well as students from our high school program, created a drink, and then whoever had the most sales won. And the Putnam family tried both of them. And I'm not going to tell you which one my favorite was, but they were very sugary. Proceeds from the event will be used to purchase books for all of our Penfield libraries and to support scholarships for seniors at the end of the year, which is very exciting. But it's a great event, and I think in that picture is Dr. Kenny reading. I don't know what school our, is it? Oh, is it Mr. Nelson? Mr. Nelson, I apologize. That Lasik surgery did not do me wonders. But yeah, so Mr. Nelson was there, and I, every year, get to interview somebody. So I had an opportunity to interview one of our authors that was there, and it was really a great event. So my, I had one of my kids playing music, and we. So my...I had one of my kids playing music, and we spent a long time at the SEPTA Book Fair and spent a lot of money, which is wonderful for SEPTA. Also, our Fall Scholar-Athlete Team. So congratulations to the following high school athletic team for being recognized as Scholar-Athlete Team for the fall season. And to qualify a Scholar-Athlete Team, that means that 75% of the participants must have an average of 90 or higher. So again, many of our...we're very proud of our academics, as well as our athletics, and when they merge together, it's even better. So Boys Cross Country, Boys Volleyball, Girls Cross Country, Girls Swimming, Girls Tennis, and Girls Volleyball are all Fall Scholar-Athlete Teams this year. And that is the end of my update for this evening, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci for Fiscal Stress, Budget Forecast, and Reserves.
Thank you. It's a long title. I've also gotten grief about the number of slides already, but I promise that I will go through them quickly, because some of them really are, even in the slides, part of the supporting documentation that goes together with the plan that you received in your board packet. So the district's had for many years a practice of going through, as part of its budget planning, a look at a forecast of our budget, sort of on a five-year basis, how we...what we think the future will hold for us, look at our reserves, and how we plan on using them over the future. And recently, and most recently, we've added a look at the Comptroller's Evaluation of Fiscal Stress for Penfield and for the other Monroe County school districts. Really, that opportunity is part of this analysis to benchmark our results against our peers. So I promise it won't take too long, but I just need to set the stage, talk a little bit about fiscal stress. As I said, some of this is supporting documentation. This gets added to, I believe, the document that you have, the last appendix on it is says PowerPoint, and it's blank behind that, but it all gets bound together, included as part of the record, because tonight's conversation is really part of our outreach and our planning to the public as well. So fiscal stress, in terms of a school district, you know, I think I'm tempted to say that we're always under some sort of fiscal stress. There's, you know, it's greater or lesser. It's a continuum. The needs that we confront are seemingly endless. We're always asked to do more, and resources, we know, are limited. So what we intend to do, what we try to do, is manage along that continuum from one piece of fiscal...from one end of fiscal stress to another, and try and stay in a position that will allow us to operate the program that our public expects of us. So what do we mean by it? What's...how can we measure fiscal stress? What is it? How would we know if we are solvent or not? And here you see, this slide looks at a number of different ways we could determine that we might be in trouble. Cash solvency, can we pay our bills? Budget solvency, it's a simple matter of do our revenues equal our expenses, or have our expenditures outstripped our available resources? Can we continue over the long run to meet our obligations in the future? And really, service-level solvency is can we continue to provide the level and quality of resources that are required? It's that service-level solvency that we pay attention to. It's the idea that our community has been very supportive of us through the years. They continue to be supportive, and in part, they have...they're supportive based on a set of expectations around what we've been able to do. So can we continue to offer that program that our community expects and has been accustomed to? So in terms of stress and monitoring, the Comptroller's adopted a system that he revised last year. Last year was a first year of a...the system itself, the idea of the Comptroller's monitoring system's been in place for a number of years, but last year, he revised it in terms of the indicators. So I'm just going to briefly go through these and compare us to our peers, so we can see sort of how do we stack up. So environmental indicators and financial indicators. We'll begin with the six environmental indicators. And you can see, these are things in our environment that might indicate that we were either subject or undergoing some...subject to or undergoing some fiscal stress. So what's our percentage of economically disadvantaged students? Is it rising, falling? What is our class size, our teacher turnover, changes in property value, budget approval percentages? What is our percentage of English language learners? And while I'm not going into detail right now about how those are evaluated, you can imagine, just as I talk about them, how they could be indicators of, in our environment, potentially something that could cause us...that could be a stress on the system. So for example, a high rate of teacher turnover, in and of itself, might be normal. It might be just one of those years. It might be a year with retirement incentive. Or it might indicate something going on in the system that's causing teachers to leave to seek employment elsewhere. So how do we do it? Percentage of economically disadvantaged students. And I mean, many of these are going to be self-evident as you look at them. So compared to our peers in Monroe County, we have a relatively low measure of economically disadvantaged students. We're about tied with Brighton, a little bit below Honey Eye Falls, Lima, and we have more than Pittsburgh. Intuitively obvious, right? I think that that is...makes sense. Our common...our...the class sizes for our common branches are about in the middle of the pack. In fact, almost identical. Teacher turnover rate, again, middle of the pack. Change in property value. Our property values have been increasing, not at the same rate as some of our surrounding community, but at a greater rate than many. Budget approval percentage. We've had for a number of years a budget approval percentage that is higher than many. And you can see here, we're in the top...we're at number four, top four, but essentially tied. One, two, and three looks like a dead heat, so...or two, three, and four, I should say, a dead heat. So very respectable budget approval percentage, and our percentage of English language learners, again, about in the middle of the pack. So nothing here in this set of metrics. Again, we didn't choose these. These were chosen by the Comptroller as indicators of potential stress. Nothing here that would cause concern. So let's turn a bit to the financial indicators. Assigned fund balance. So this is the amount that a district appropriates from one budget into a future budget as a revenue over its expenditures. If that's growing, if it's greater, if it gets more and more, it might be an indicator that a district's run through its reserves, it's trying to fill a budget gap or hole, and so that would be of a concern. You see, we're about at the average in the county, just a little bit above. And while we're kind of at the higher end, really, no need to be concerned. Total fund balance over expenditures. So this is the total amount of money that the district has in fund balance and reserves divided by expenditures. So more is better in this regard, in terms of fiscal stress. Those districts to the right on that graph are in greater levels, potentially, or subject to greater levels of stress. Operating deficits. If a district runs an operating deficit, clearly, there's something going on. Only two districts in the county have done that over the past, what is that, three years? And only...and one of those districts has two years in a row of it. Cash and short-term investments over net liabilities. So again, amount of cash available to meet your liabilities, middle of the pack. And finally, another measure of cash, cash as a percentage of your monthly expenditures, again, about in the middle of the pack. So it suggests that, and we've been fairly consistent over time. When you look back over time, while these metrics have changed slightly, they've been fairly consistent. And as you look back over time, we've been pretty consistent. In fact, the Comptroller's score for us is zero. Well, that's not true. When you...for this year, in the environmental returns, 5% because that level, the 10% level of teacher turnover triggers 5%...five points. Fiscal is zero, but five points is hardly in this fiscal stress rating scale, hardly something to be concerned about. You begin to be susceptible for fiscal stress at 25 points, and moderate fiscal stress begins at 45. So clearly, we're a long way from that, by that metric. So what I always say here is that this is a...and it's important to take a look at this for two reasons. The first reason, I think, is that the idea behind it is good, that districts should take a look at things in their environment, take a look at the way they're managing their own affairs, try and benchmark those against their peers, and make a judgment about, are we in trouble, or are we headed for trouble in the future? This would argue that we're not. But what I'd also say is that it's also backwards-looking. It looks...this is stuff that is two things. It's easy to measure, and it's accessible to the Comptroller. That makes it a workable system at the state level, but it maybe is not the best measure of potential fiscal stress for us. Because our metric, what we have to be concerned about, is that service-level solvency. Are there things that we're aware of that could impact our ability to meet our community's expectations? And for us, as we look forward, that's where we make the transition into our five-year budget plan. Let's look forward. Let's take what we know. Let's think about what we know about the way we do business, and let's try and forecast what our future looks like in the near and short term. So we know what drives our budget. We know that 75...74% of our budget is salaries and benefits. A quarter of our budget's everything else. And we know on the revenue side, the two-thirds of our budget, 64% of our budget, comes from the taxpayers. State aid forms a quarter, and everything else, all the other things we spend a lot of time talking about, only compose 8% of our budget. This slide's important because, as you know, the tax cap is acting on that 64% of our budget. So we're restrained. We're not able to really manage that as much as we once were able to. And the 28%, the next largest chunk of our budget, is at the whim of the state and of the state's fiscal structure. So that's a piece of fiscal stress that we need to manage through. We've been successful. We now have...I have updated this for one more year, at 11 years now, looking back over that 11-year period, we're still under 2% in terms of...it's been over in years in terms of levy increases. But over 11 years, we're averaging just under the 2%. We...I've said that we're a...and I believe that we were a 2% district before there were 2%. We've always tried to be moderate and thoughtful about our increases as we move forward. But the tax cap's real. The tax cap matters to us as we plan. So this is the tax-based growth factor, amount of the...this is an important component that I'm making the transition into, into the tax cap. This is the tax-based growth factor for this year. So this is the...this is this year's calculation of the growth of real property in the community. So new construction. And you can see, we're...we are the county average. We are exactly the county average. Interesting, I'm not quite sure what's going on in Fairport. I find that really interesting. Yeah. I've had more people than I could say tell me, well, Fairport's built out, and that impacts their enrollment. This could be commercial construction. You know, it probably is, in fact. I don't know what that is, but nonetheless, it's real. And as you can see, it can't be less than one. So, you know, very constrained community at the other end of the spectrum, East Rondiquet, with no available land, not much room for new development there. We're about in the middle of the pack. We are the average. What that turns out for us will be 0.77%. We know that the allowable levy growth, based on what the rate of inflation will be, will be 2%. So this year, we will be looking at that 2% tax cap. When we take that, when we take those pieces of information, put it into a tax forecast on the 64% of our budget that's supported by...supported by the taxpayers, look at the expense side, look at the three-quarters of our budget that is salaries, and forecast that forward, along with some other things you know. You can...this shows that we...that if all these assumptions hold true, we're going to maintain our budget without a deficit for the next five years. Is this a perfect analysis? No, of course not. It's a projection. It's a...it's an estimate of what the future could hold. But I know this board, and some of the members on this board, have seen in the bad years where those red bars came a lot faster and closer, as we took what we knew and projected it forward. So I think it's cautionary, but remember, this would assume that you don't make any changes, that we don't have retirements, that we don't have retirement incentives, that everything we know goes forward, that everything increases at a steady rate. So it's cautionary. It's good news. We can maintain our...we can maintain our solvency, our service-level solvency into the near future, and we'll continue to work every year to look at that, to ensure that we're able to over the long term. Surplus is a part of managing that. I have several slides I'm not going to go through. This gets put on the web, on the website, so this is really informational for folks looking at the plan and trying to understand how it all fits together. I know the board knows this, so I'm not going to go through it. But a few slides on what a surplus is, where it comes from, why you would have one, how a budget generates one. And I would pause here just to mention that outside agencies like Moody's...and actually, we just...and we just today got a draft, and I need to approve tomorrow the draft, of a Moody's update. We don't really get to approve it. They send it to us and say, do you see any material errors? We didn't, so it'll be issued over the course of the next couple of days. By Moody's, I'll send a copy to the board, but essentially, every year, they update their outlook of Penfield. It's very positive. We'll be going back to the bond market in the near future for borrowings around the elementary additions project. This will be relevant for that. So this is a...Moody's has rated us AA2, which is a high-quality investment grade. It's a very high rating for Penfield. And the quote here from that analysis simply is that the district's healthy reserve positions, long...high...strong liquidity, and trend of strong financial performance are what they base that rating on. Essentially, they review what goes into that in their annual update. It's just a two-page thing. It's a quick read. I'm sure you'll be interested in it, so I'll make sure you get it. But really, this is that outside agency's advice to consumers of our debt, to people who are purchasing our bonds, as to our creditworthiness in the terms of the way we manage our affairs. And this kind of planning is really important to them as they judge us in that venue. This is budget...a slide of budget-to-actuals history, showing our management of the budget. The red's revenue, the green is expense, and the black, the little black tips on those are capital expenditures in each of the given years. So the third bar off to the right are surpluses. You can see they bob up and down over the course of the years. This is a different way to look at that. This is the Comptroller's method for looking at surplus. You can see that in terms of variance in budget over the period of time, it averages about 6%. After transfers for capital projects, around 1%. Our guideline, our guidance, is for around 5% of variance prior to transfers. So that means we're a little higher than where we want to be, but we've been working at tightening that up. We'll continue over the course of the next several years, and we believe that we'll be able to...we know that we'll be able to bring that in where it needs to be. Terms of...this is just some follow-up on that. This is our 5%. There's no...that's our guideline. That's this board's guideline. There's no formal or statutory guidance. For towns, it's 10%, but based on our analysis, what our auditor has said, looking at Comptroller's audits, it seems that 5% is a reasonable place to be. A little discussion on reserves. Again, informational for folks reading the document, District's Philosophy versus Guidance by the Comptroller. Just the idea that our philosophy, what we believe lines up with what the Comptroller has offered in terms of guidance in the past. A review of each of the reserves, when they were established, how they were funded, what their limits are, and so on. So several slides of reserve information. Analysis is included for each of the reserves, sort of the ins and outs over the period of the last year. So for example, you can see in the Taxer Shiori Reserve, in the middle of the slide, we have $712,000 reserved against outstanding claims. We earned interest of about $1,400. We paid claims of $28,000. And at the end of the year, based on existing claims, we transferred into that reserve an additional $400,000, bringing the balance up to about $1,000,002. You'll see in our analysis that you'll need...that we will need to look at that again as we move forward, as those claims mature and as they pile up over the course of years. Debt Service Fund, and similar analysis, and also of just our fund balances, showing the assigned and unassigned fund balance. the assigned and unassigned fund balance. This is my favorite one, because honestly, this one's just easier than the rest of the ins and outs, a nice pie chart showing what the status of our reserves. You can see the single largest one is our capital reserve. That ebbs and flows throughout time, as we do capital projects, as we add to it for future capital projects, it gets bigger and smaller. The next largest is bus purchase reserve. So, between those two, those are both considered capital reserves, sixty-four percent of our reserves are for capital work, either bus purchase or facilities, and were voter-approved. So, those are, the board can establish some reserves, but the voters authorize specifically those two reserves with their respective limits. I will go through this fairly quickly, these are the status in terms of reserves, where we're at, and what we recommend doing as we move forward. So, unemployment, no changes, it's a very small reserve, and it's really just maintained to buffer spikes in claims, so we would not propose any changes. There's an employee benefit accrued liability reserve, again, that is just adjusted at year-end to reflect an outstanding obligation that we have to one particular bargaining unit. This is by rote, there's not really a lot of choice to be had here, so we would par it up at year-end to reflect the obligation. Tax erschiori reserve, we're actually right now at forty-seven percent of our outstanding cases, so that reserve should be increased to seventy-five percent, we should consider that, not now, but at year-end when we look at this, we should look at where our outstanding cases are and make a determination as to the appropriate level of funding. And generally, we have funded, depending on where we were at, sort of in the cycle, up to a hundred percent of the outstanding cases. Generally, when it gets below fifty, we start to consider that it should be increased. The seventy-five percent has historically been sort of where we want to end up in terms of the percent of outstanding cases. Nothing magic about it, but just a guideline to, you know, a bellwether as we look forward. Workers' compensation reserve, that was established to fund a deficit, to, not to, to insure us, I guess, against a deficit in the county consortium. That deficit is working its way out and is well on its way out now, in fact, it's in its first year of positive performance over the last several. So, the recommendation here is that we ensure that that is, that trend continues, so begin to look at that over the next year, or perhaps two, probably one year, one more year, make sure the trend towards positive performance continues, and if so, consider the liquidation of it. I would recommend, and we can consider at that time, that we use those funds, this is also a fairly small reserve, to begin the process of re-establishing a capital reserve. That's going to depend on what happens in the near future with capital work and the depletion of that reserve. So, pay attention to that as we move forward. Bus purchase, we've had a plan in place for a number of years that balances, draws from the reserve every year with money included in the budget. We would continue that, but I think we need to be more sensitive in our planning, it's a little rigid, I think we need to be a little more sensitive in our planning to space under the tax cap, how much there is or isn't, and sort of adjust to that. So, we want to think about that as we move forward on an annual basis. I put in here, consider impacts of the driver shortage, I think we're going to need to change the mix of our buses, perhaps, as we move forward a little bit, so that could have an impact on the reserve. So, I just wanted to, we get a chance to be thoughtful about this every year, as we offer a resolution for purchase of buses in every budget, so we'll just need to be attentive to it as we move forward. Retirement contributions, we've been using that money slowly out of that reserve, we need to determine an appropriate level for the upcoming budget and review the balances, really just continue with the funds that we have in place, it's really intended to ensure against short-term spikes, and right now, the rates are level and declining. And debt service fund will just be part of our reduction of debt, our planning around the future capital project. We used a million dollars of it to prepay debt during sixteen-seventeen, you'll recall, we had planned on using two million dollars of it as part of the, when the elementary additions project included the bus garage and was much larger, we were going to dip into this as part of our borrowing strategy with the smaller project. The dip will be a much smaller, the dip into this will be much smaller, we need, we are not yet finalized on how much that's going to be, but we'll need to include that as part of that planning, and then include the remainder of that into planning for the next capital project. Insurance reserve, we adjusted a couple of years ago as a result of the comptroller's audit, we would just continue where we're at with that. And capital reserves, we talk about it at every, practically every capital meeting, so we're at fifteen million dollars in reserve, we just used seven million dollars in support of the elementary additions project. And as we move forward, you'll recall that our current plan around capital projects is seven million, about seven million, seven million, and then a larger capital project tied in with the building condition survey, we'll need to use this money to offset expenses for that, to maintain our budget plan. So, that's, I think, whoops, I need a question slide. So, with that, that's the sort of overview of reserves, fiscal stress, and where we're at. As I said, you have that much more expansive document, are there any questions I could answer at this point?
Board members, any questions? Very comprehensive, as usual, and as we do every year, you know, for Bill's sake, this is how we start, and we look at this, and later in the agenda we'll approve this, but it's very comprehensive, and as we all know, municipal finance is so much different than regular finance, so.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Mark, and we'll go from there.
That concludes the superintendent reports for this evening, and Bill will be a quiz shortly for you. We're all set.
We're under facilities, as you can see, we have six change orders, all to the benefit of us as the owners. So, if I could have, the above change orders have been reviewed and are supported by our architect Vic Tomaselli, project manager Gary Huffman, clerk of the works Alan McNiff, and deputy superintendent for business and finance Mark Sansousi. If I could have a motion and a second that these change orders, as described, be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Our financial items, obviously, we just heard a comprehensive overview of reserve funding and use, which is great to have, and it's good to see, and it's also good to see where we are in the areas of our other school districts, I think that's important to watch and to monitor. And for those of you who haven't yet sat in, when the state auditors come and make their report, you'll enjoy that time, too, to visit with the kids, as we call them. Okay. We have a recommended action, that we approved the annual reserve plan and the recommendations presented. Board policy 5630 requires that the board conduct an annual review of all reserve funds. In addition to this required review, this information is also intended as part of the annual budget presentations during the budget process. Regular review of this important aspect of the district's finances is intended to ensure transparency in the process and to assist the board in making our necessary decisions to adequately fund all reserves, manage the fund balance, and ensure overall budgetary integrity of the district. We did have this review today, December 11th, if I could have a motion and a second that the board hereby approves the annual reserve plan and the presented recommendations and directs the recommendations for reserve use being incorporated into our 2019, 2020 planning process.
So moved. Second.
Second, any questions, comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, we also had in your pack at the property tax collection status under financial items. And as we all know, as of November each year, the town tax collectors have finalized their property tax collections for the school levy, and remitted all funds collected to the school district, and submitted all unpaid bills to the county. In your attachment was the status of the Penfield Central School District tax levy authorized by the board on August 7th, additions and cancellations to the authorized levy and collections through November 30th, 2018. If I could have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approved the 2018-19 property tax collection status, including all additions and cancellations made to the original approved levy amount.
So moved.
Second, any question, okay, any questions or comments? So, these are our people who we don't know, but they haven't paid their school taxes.
Oh, wow.
So, we send them on, and this is pretty common everywhere. All those in favor? Posed, thank you. We did have also donations, we had some great donations totaling thirteen thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and fifteen cents that were shown as follows. Penfield Septa, Cabo's Elementary, two hundred twenty-seven dollars, Penfield Septa, Scrivner Elementary, forty-five seventy-nine, Indian Landing Elementary, PTO, Arts and Education, three thousand dollars, Indian Landing Elementary, PTO Equipment, one thousand five hundred dollars, Cabo's Elementary, PTA, Arts and Education, one thousand eight hundred forty dollars, Harris Hill Elementary Book Fair Proceeds, two thousand one one six seventy-four, Scrivner Elementary Book Fair Proceeds, one thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-four cents, Bay Trail Middle School Book Fair Proceeds, one thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents, and Indian Landing Elementary Book Fair Proceeds, one thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. If I could have a motion and a second that the board approve an amendment totaling thirteen thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and fifteen cents to the 2018-19 budget, as shown above, submitted both as revenue and expenditure, and express its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield schools, and all Penfield parents, students, and the staff for their support of this year's book fairers.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Thank you. And we always send them a nice, kind note to thank them, and it's a great amount of money.
Yeah, a lot of work.
Lot of work, lot of work. And it seems like this number just grows every year. Barb, I think, you know, from our experience, it's really grown.
Yeah, really.
Okay. We do have an organizational item in regard to the appointment of Marsha Vick as Extracurricular Activity Fund Central Treasurer at Bay Trail Middle School. That's a title you won't find anyplace else. And we have to have an appointment of this treasurer due to recent resignation at Bay Trail Middle School, we need to appoint a new Extracurricular Activity Fund Central Treasurer. If I can have a motion and a second that the board approves the appointment of Marsha Vick as Extracurricular Activity Fund Central Treasurer at Bay Trail Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? So, it's just a resignation, straight-out resignation?
It was actually a retirement.
Retire, okay, great.
So, one of the clerical at Bay Trail retired, and we need someone to fill this position, and Marsha Vick works at Bay Trail in the main office as well.
Great, okay. All those in favor? Posed, thank you. We heard a comprehensive Medicaid compliance plan certification earlier in the night, and we have to annually recertify the Medicaid compliance plan. Must be submitted annually by December 31st, the board has reviewed the compliance program's self-assessment tool developed by the Office of Medicaid Inspector General, and this has been reviewed by the District Medicaid Compliance Committee, as we heard earlier, and no substantive changes have been made from prior years. Approval is recommended, if I could have a motion and a second that the board recertify the Medicaid compliance plan as presented above.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Thank you. We also heard a great description guide, again, I thought that cover was just great on that guide, I mean, I don't even remember having a guide when I went to high school, so, as my kids say in the eighteen hundreds. So, if I could have a motion and a second that the 2019-2020 Penfield High School Course Description Guide be approved as presented tonight and above.
So moved. Second.
Second, questions, comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, our Monroe County School Board Committee meetings, labor relations, Barb, anything, Lisa, anything to update us on?
It was confusing.
Oh, yes, that was the confusing one.
Yes, field trips, that was the umbrella, and then it got confusing.
Yeah, Sherry got some feedback that, you know, some topics may be a little too complex for the general offering, but we clarified.
Yeah, I think one of the...
I think the meeting kind of went off on a tangent, people asked a lot of questions, and I think that's why I was confused at the Harrison meeting when they were talking about the club, and I was like, wait a minute, like, it was, it was very, and I felt kind of bad for the presenter, because he kept saying, "That's a gray area, that's a..." Like, there was a lot of that, so.
I can just share with, one of the, yeah, Dr. Sansousi was able to go, usually I try to go to labor relations for that reason. You know, with Monroe County School Boards, they do an incredible job, but when, any organization, when you bring an attorney in to present, you're always going to get gray, because, you know, typically, a couple of the court cases they were using were from the early nineties, things have changed, and so, really, I like the caveat that, that when I've seen attorneys present at school boards or at superintendent conferences, I love when they say, "Before you make an action, check with your local counsel," because there's a difference of opinion sometimes in what that looks like. And so, this, I would just tell you, labor relations meeting, it's not just our confusion from our board members, it was a topic at the monthly superintendent meeting, because many board members went back with lots of questions, and in terms of sort of how things were led, and so, I just, I appreciate Lisa sending the questions, if you have one, and Barb, you know, if you go to a meeting and you, you know, I'd rather you send it as opposed to staying up late at night worried, so, thank you, and we'll keep moving forward.
Thank you.
And I do want to note, probably two years ago, we spent, you know, the board presidents meet every month, and we probably spent two meetings going round and round on this topic, until we just got to the point, it's like, we should all check with our legal counsel, we're all going to be different. So, that's why I'm surprised to see that topic, but, you know...
It didn't come from me. I didn't, I didn't.
Okay, all right. How about our legislative committee? Mark?
Well, fortunately, I was unable to attend the meeting or the trip because of other obligations, so I don't have much to report.
And the trip was canceled prior day, one, the attendance was low, but the two primary reasons were, there were two scheduled hearings, one the Assembly Education Committee and one the Senate, that we normally don't see, so those were going to fill up some time, and they were canceled abruptly. And the transition for a meeting with the staffs that we meet with in December, there's a great amount of transition going on because the Senate changing hands. So, based on that, Sherry contacted the office and said, you know, "What do you think?", and we said, "No, just, let's cancel it, we'll regroup and figure it out." There's going to be a lot of figuring out with the Senate this year, for sure, so. And executive committee meeting, Catherine, myself, and Dr. Putnam were there last week, and I think the highlight was that the Victor Central School District has been accepted as a full member, officially, and that closes our membership, so we are full, and we don't have any more room for any other members, basically because, you know, we now have twenty members, and we have two and a half staff people, and we're at the maximum, but they're very happy to be a part of us, as you know, we interact with Victor in a lot of different things, they're actually in our division for sports, and their board is very, very excited. It's a process we started two years ago, and they're very excited to be a part of us, so, we thought that was great. Okay, I don't think there was anything else in the executive committee meeting you remember, we had a couple of retirements.
Yeah, Jeff Crane and Sue Allen, the two superintendents from West and East Rondequay are both...
Oh, right.
around the great, are both, as of January 1st, are, are retired. So we'll see two new superintendents joining the ranks within the next few months.
So just like as Mark puts the bar graphs out, we have our superintendent going up there for our terms of longevity.
Yeah.
Believe it or not.
Yeah.
Believe it or not.
It's interesting.
Yeah, so, okay. I don't have any unfinished business, yes?
No, sorry.
No? Okay. Any unfinished business? Or is there any new business for the good of the whole here?
I would just like to say, happy holidays, happy new year. Our next meeting is in the future, so I hope everybody has a great, great
2019.
And when I sit here and look at 2019, 2020, I remember sitting there when Mark was putting stuff out, and it was 2010, and we were looking, and it's like, oh, God, that's a lifetime away. And here we are, so. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:43 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.